Welcome everyone to the council meeting. A consideration for approval of the minutes. All non-mediated further discussion. Any favors seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, four zero one, don't say anything else. Consent times five A through C, any questions? Beesel, none? None? Seconded by Paul, any further discussion? One favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous. We go to eleven A. Roadway Club, three point, three two mall liquor license on sale one day June sixth at the Haylock. Mike, sir second, none, any further discussion? Favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries five zero unanimous. Twelve A, open, steer lighting, close. Larry?
How you doing? Two weeks ago, we opened bids for roping on shelter and do some lighting and the council asked me to go back and get some different quotes. And I had three different electricians quote, the light that we, the cheaper light, and a little bit was steel electricity. I'm asking you to award the electrical with steel electricity.
Steel electricity, any questions, Greg? Mike, seconded by Don, any further discussion? You want to add?
No.
When are we going to do that?
They're going to start roping next, next week.
The steel?
The steel. And then they're going to tear the soffit off, so they can start putting the lights in.
Okay, are you going to put some steel in the soffit too, or only the rope?
Rope, the soffits and the able-ends.
Right.
It's all official, yes.
Where the wood goes all the way along to the strips on the, sort of.
Well, the strips will come off and then just be shipped into the steel.
Very good, okay. All in favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
The doctor?
Yes, sir.
Day request, street closed for pick-up tables.
Sign for the annual hot dog days downtown. Saturday, May seventeenth, we have level sand issue, rough one from last year. Requesting that we close Main Street from Marshawn Boulevard to A plus and then we'll leave open by true value. Hot dog sales are from one to eleven to one, so there will be a sand at Super Fair and when all the sleeping parts are finished. Request the permission to close those streets. But how long do you want it slowed up now? Well, I usually take it down about one thirty, that's what time everybody gets done cleaning up and getting the big tables back off the street and then send them off, so.
Anyways, twenty eight hundred last year, going to your mail?
Yep.
John, thank you for doing that. So also wishes, Tom and Paul, any further discussion? Anything you want to add?
No, thank you very much. They've outdone support on all the groups.
Thanks for your contribution, sir. We didn't do anything, uh.
Thank you.
All in favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thirteen B, street closed June sixth, Haylock, A. This picture, buddy. Is that your car over here?
Yep, thirty five, got to run this.
What is it?
Thirty five Ford.
Thirty five Ford.
Yeah, I'm honored to be hosting a music cast with Georgette Jones coming up on June sixth. She's a daughter of George Jones in San Diego right now. And it's going to be an outside concert and I'm requesting, I have fourteen street closed, that's the street between, uh, Mark Run East and Haylock and stuff. And because that's, uh, I'm going to have parking and stuff on the other side of Mark's place and then I'm bouncing that all in. And I'm hopefully even getting some street rods and plastic cars and stuff coming in and then we're going to have the seating of the people right in the streets there, you know, right close to the stage.
Is your music dress going to be on your latte, or is it?
Yeah, I'm going to have, I'm setting the stage, the stage is going to be right in front of my window.
Okay.
And stuff, so. And then there's more seating, you know, like in the street and then on our, our runes and stuff, so.
How are you doing?
Pretty busy street to be closing up.
Yeah.
Which is a little busier, right?
Yeah.
I assume that's a motion.
Yes.
Sir second? Paul, any further discussion? One favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous. Before you go Dave, give us a little background, Leonardis and stuff, that'd be good, because.
Oh, okay.
All right, just get it snowing now, if you want to get it now on the.
You're on TV.
You're on TV.
Oh.
On our cable access channel.
Well, now we can't watch.
You did last year.
Three.
Yeah, do that to you, bud.
Yes. Yeah, it's my honor to get entertainer like Georgette Jones. She's, I had to pull a few strings and some of my good friends come through, because otherwise I wouldn't have been able to pull it off. But she's coming on an Ash Hill and, uh, and she's coming with her, with her band, there's going to be four of them in the group. Start off with, I got, we're going to open the doors at five o'clock and then I've got two other bands coming in about six o'clock and, uh, I've got, I've got Steve Lane out of Iowa, he's going to be coming into a lot of good old Marty Robbins songs, a lot of good old country classics and, uh, and then I got Denny in DC Drift, Denny Sharnicki out of Austin, Minnesota. He used to play with George Jones, so he's one fantastic guitar player, so I mean, he's been all over the country, played with Willie Nelson and all of them. So we really got some good entertainers coming in and stuff. And then we're going to be bringing Georgette on about eight o'clock. And she's, she's going to play for about an hour and ten minutes. She's going to have, I just talked with her, she's going to have autograph signing before she goes onstage and a little bit beforehand and then after, she's going to stick around and read every bit after, I guess, too. So it's really a nice gal, she just reminds me of her mother, Sammy Ryan, so.
So Friday, June sixth, doors open at five, the first band starts, you said around six?
Yeah.
Okay, me and program be at eight o'clock, so Friday, June sixth at the Haylock.
Yep.
Okay, thank you Dave, very much for doing that.
Yes, and thank you there.
Yep, good night. Thirteen C, ordinance amending section five point two, gear license required, second reading.
This is to include or allow us to issue licenses to organizations that are five one one C three, for tax exempt organizations under the Internal Revenue Service Code.
Second reading, uh, on publications, valid, see, wasn't correct, okay.
Some more, just sense of reading.
None, seconded by Don, just sense of reading. Right. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor seen by by show of hands? Close, resolute, excuse me, ordinance passes four zero unanimous. Thirteen D, two thousand thirteen water quality report, Mark.
This is a yearly report from Minnesota Department of Health that we have to publish annually. Basically gives a budgeted item. As you can see, it basically tells where our water comes from. It tells what we tested for in the past year, along with some other ones that we've tested in the previous years. This year, the lead and copper were extra compared to the years before. And if you take a look, we had a zero out of twenty, which is exceptional. Uh, tell us both chlorine.
Which is what?
Pardon me?
Zero out of twenty, which is.
Exceptional, we had no, nothing whatsoever. Uh, the PHM nitrates, uh, variant, it's basically anything that the, the state has come down and tested for in the last year. Again, I'm pleased to announce that we've met or exceeded all, uh, testing. Requesting that we put this into the shopper's guide publication. Uh, there are other ways of publicizing this, but they do cost a little extra compared to sending each individual household business a publication entirely of it. Electronic notification, which we're not quite up for. But not only would we put it in the shoppers, we will have it on the city website. There will be a Spanish version at City Hall upon request. And so I'm just asking that we be allowed to print this.
So, for a second?
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? Thanks, Doc, for the favorable rate that you gave us. Anything you want to add?
No.
All in favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous. Four zero unanimous. Wellhead protection, RFP, Mark.
Back in two thousand and five, we did what was called a wellhead protection. What this is, is that we had, we hired a company to go out and delineate our wells. Delineating our wells means we find where the water is coming from, how long it takes to travel a certain distance. They did what's called the dwidma, drinking water supply management area. It's approximately a two mile square area out by our wells. Uh, two thousand and six, we upgraded for the part, part two. Every ten years, we have to go through this again and upgrade our wellhead protection plan. Um, state of Minnesota contacted me here a month ago or something, requested that, we knew we had to do it by two thousand and sixteen, they requested that we start early. The reason for, there is such a large amount of towns that they would like to get us going, get us on board, get it done. Um, talked to Joel, with the projects that we got coming up in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we thought it would be an excellent idea to get it going now.
Do you have a guess of the cost?
Twenty to twenty-five thousand. Uh, we have to hire a company, engineering firm, that specifically does this. Um, requesting that we put out the RFPs, uh, we will find the companies, basically the same ones that we did before and send them out and get the quotes on what this is.
It's not a buzzer item, but we have enough reserve to pay that.
Right.
And a significant part of it will be done next year, so.
Right now, but will be this year, it'll be kind of split in two.
Motion by Don, two second by Noni, any further discussion? Anything you want to add, Mark?
No.
All in favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous, thanks, Mark, for your reports.
If anybody wants to look at the plan that we have, it's right here. There's, there's two books, part one and part two.
Noni would like it first. Curbin gutter replacement for water breaks.
As you know, this past year's been a exceptional year for water breaks.
Exceptional?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, now then, spring has come and we start putting everything back together. We went out and followed, we got approximately three hundred feet of curb that we need to replace. We thought it was a good idea to get some prices. Um, we got three quote, three quotes from SINE, CAG and EK Construction, ranging from nine thousand to ten thousand, four eighty-nine to fifteen thousand, one fifty-five. Our recommendation is to go with SINE's construction for the nine thousand dollars.
See if that, see if we have three quotes, so these wishes, also wishes, any, motion by Don, any further discussion?
You think curbin gutter, all of the modern style, I'm going to put the reggae B, reggae curbin gutter and old style curbin.
There's a couple old style curb.
Well, you're just going to put a reggae curb in there?
Well, imagine with the other curb, we're going to put it back the way it was.
Best you can.
The best we can.
If you have to replace, uh, something that doesn't have a ramp, didn't have a ramp at, at time, or?
Yes.
To then make a ramp.
There will be at least one handicap.
Okay.
Because it's close to the intersection.
Well, we basically took out the sidewalk, so we basically got to put it back, not the way it was, but with, with the ramp.
That's blowing one?
Right now, yeah. Yeah, we, I don't foresee that we have any other ones, they're basically all on a nice stretch, so it's all this straight curb, except for a couple that are on the, uh.
Do we, you have to follow the rules and the smokes and everything for the ADA, you get to mitigate your sheet to follow or something?
We, uh, we're following everything that is specific to what is being done.
Okay, we'll get that into your mix now. Good boy, good questions. All in favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous, thanks, Mark. Are you going to do that like the next sixty, ninety days, thirty, ninety days?
Um, yeah, well, I'd like to have it done in the next thirty days if possible. Uh, I got to talk to Les, we'll see.
Very good, okay, thanks, Mark. Thirteen G, resolution for parallel parking only, eleven street from First Avenue to Tenth Avenue, Norm.
One one county is reconstructing eleven street of concrete and it's currently stated project, so there are a couple of resolutions dealing with the fact that we must, they must follow the state aid rules and one is that their parallel parking point may be allowed in that section. Typically, nobody's parking there.
Great. Just pass the old shoulder.
Right.
So we have two resolutions. Two resolutions, one on with parallel parking and another one approving the project itself.
Did you get a copy of the plans?
Plans are available. Uh, streets are permanent?
Three. What?
You reviewed the plans for the eleven street project?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
We've had like three meetings already with the, it's coming?
We have four.
Also just for information, there will be on the twentieth of May, from five until six at the fire hall, a public informational meeting dealing with that project, so the public will be invited. Send a special invitation shot for people that live on that street, so they've got some idea because it's going to be on concrete, so there will be significant closure time.
We put it on our website?
Thank you.
This is a resolution, the first resolution is for parallel parking only.
So low, I spent with the reading.
Mike, just sense of reading. Please, any further discussion? All in favor seen by the same guy? Close, resolution passes four zero unanimous, second one is to approve the project itself. Mike, just sense of reading. None, any further discussion? All in favor seen by the same guy? Close, and the resolution passes four zero unanimous. Okay, thirteen I, theater ramp project, Joe.
The safety process committee has been in power tech with Willcon Construction and refers to replacing the ramp, handicap ramp coming along with the theater. We have, uh, recommending that we hire Willcon as the general contractor for the project, which means they will oversee and making sure that they have an architect hired, a structural engineer on board to make sure that structurally what's being built is sound. We will go up for bids for the various materials that will be used for the ramp. We're looking at fiberglass material for the base of the ramp. People will walk on, uh, metal structure rather than concrete, so the metal pillars with concrete base. You have an additional packet which was handed out this evening, which shows you a better design. The ramp will come out of the door and go south, four ways, and then come back, go north to where it is now, and then come back down. Entrance on the ground level will be at the same base that it is now, the same area.
Just to meet our ADA required, right.
And there are, it's going to be longer? It's going to be longer.
It's going to be a flat sore.
Correct. And then there's also resting points, if you take a look at the second page, um, yeah, you have, you can only go so many feet and then you have to have a resting flat area for people that are in wheelchairs or having problems walking. Uh, we're going to be looking at an aluminum and stainless steel alternatives. We'll see, and we'll be bringing all this stuff back to council as in regards to what the best option may be. Transition coming from the sidewalk to the ramp itself, there's some concern in regards to the fact that that transition area is going to be concrete before we get into this material. And if we put salt and sand on that to keep the ice and snow off, we're looking at an option of having that area heated, so that we end up with, uh, less of a possible area for being erosion.
The concrete pad?
The concrete pad, yes. The door upstairs will be a handicap access door that has the ability of playing the buttons and opening and closing, so that we don't have to have an employee standing at the top of the stairs, which should somebody's getting there.
Um, who's used this and what do we know about how it reacts to snow and ice, et cetera?
Uh, Jill from Willcon is here and she has a catalog which shows the various areas where it is being used currently. It's being used at swimming pools, wastewater treatment facilities. We've done quite a bit of research in regards to what is the best kind of use as an application for toilets.
I only have one copy there, so.
Thank you, passioner.
So, so it has been used in an area that would get good use in the winter, obviously, and those, wouldn't necessarily clog up, no cost problems? With, uh, with ice bill up, or that you know of?
Not that I know of, no, no, it's the, the purpose for it.
Can you talk into the, talk into Mike, would you please? Do you know where it's at now, Joe? Some places where this is used?
I, I do not know locally for exact, that's something that I could ask the German Hall, um, software contractors who have been working a lot. I can, um, when I did ask them, did that know any local projects, however, um, it's, you know, the research to kind of help me to try to come up with something.
And this is a similar material to what, we had talked to some of the architects that we've talked with over the past couple of years. It doesn't have the weight that the concrete has, so it's, it's going to make our structure a little bit more stable.
That effect is up, yeah, that's what they're going to do. And I think not as correct, but these holes won't fill us, they won't, water won't stay there in this, like the snow and ice.
It's supposed to, it's supposed to trickle down over time.
But it is, even if it did have, even if it did freeze up, this is pretty abrasive. That it's not, yeah, it's, it's higher than the hole, so it wouldn't be able to fill the leaky section.
The other neat thing about it is, is this stuff comes in sections, so that if there was damage.
You can repair it.
You can repair it. Where right now, if part of that walkway goes down, we're done.
If you could get some pictures of that from some, or someplace that has this material, Joe, that would be beneficial, give it to Joe.
They'll probably all be in down south for you. All right.
Well, everything here looks like bike wire, et cetera, and so my, my concern is, how's it hold up as far as when we have ice or snow, obviously, and it'll clog up. Will it clog up and then, how easy is it to make sure it's not slippery?
You'll see that if, if that's.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it.
Well, yeah, and if those holes freeze, freeze solid, the top is pretty abrasive.
So, Joe, too. You said, is there going to be more engineering for life, like they, and stuff that could this be, just sitting right here?
No, no, this is just a formulary, basically a schematic of what needs to be done out there to get us to the point, but it will have to be anywhere when you have contact.
Then this timeline you got here, why would we put an ad in two weeks and after, especially if you don't have it?
We anticipate. And we may end up, I mean, this is just a rough timeline, we can't need it, uh, getting the materials themselves is going to take at least ninety days from the time of the business line. So, and again, you got a little bit of record. The other thing is, we've also made a comment that we're not going to start demolition here until all the materials are out of sight.
Basically what we're asking for the man is just to proceed with local.
Are you okay with this?
Yes. I think I hear you.
Someone? None.
Second.
Paul, any further discussion? Anything you want to add? You'll get us some photographs and a place where it's at and more information is available, you get the book back here in a change. All in favor seen by the same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries four zero unanimous, thanks, Joe. Okay, thirteen J, resolution accepting financial gift from American Legion for a hundred and fifty dollars to the fire department. This is a resolution for. Okay, it's back to the reading. Paul? Don? Second?
Second.
Nice, just sense of reading, I see that. All in favor seen by by show of hands? Close, resolution passes four zero unanimous. Okay, thirteen K. Resolution from VFW to the fire department for two hundred and fifty dollars. Like a noni, just sense of reading. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor seen by by show of hands? Close, resolution passes four zero unanimous. Thank you to the Legion and the VFW for the contribution to our fire department. Thirteen, no, wastewater department truck.
On the first, we opened up bids for a new wastewater department truck. And we, upon looking at used trucks and stuff, we decided to go and look at the new stuff and pricing it quite a bit cheaper on the new ones, as you can see. Uh, recommendation is go with the super cab, um, medelia.
Which is a little bit is twenty-five, five ninety-six?
Correct.
It's interesting, we talked about this before, that there's such, that there's such a spread.
So.
And so close on the, on the regular one?
Right.
No way to, no way to know.
Kind, yeah, it's kind of a note bringer on that one, the way the, where the money is on that.
Okay. And we also want the.
And then also in the, the plot package and stuff on there.
Of eighty-nine oh three four, yeah.
Correct.
Chris Joe.
Always budgeted.
We talked about that, uh, last meeting, but there is enough in the capital equipment fund to pay for it. We would have had a budget for next year, but because the other truck went to heck, we're doing it this year, but it's in, but there's money in capital equipment, so it's a pass through the general fund, capital equipment to the general fund to pay for it. Good question.
Because we don't have to have a second bid on this no product attachment?
About that price.
About that price? Okay. Because it's under.
So? Well, Noni, second, Paul, any further discussion? Just take a little bit of super cab, uh, from David Ford and his boss, so far from Christ Hill. All in favor seen by by same guy?
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimous, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thirteen M, Ferguson Water Works. That's the back office database solutions and handheld rentals.
This is, that's a quote from Ferguson for us to rent from them, uh, a handheld which will be used when they install the electronic electric meters. Uh, in your packet, you have a price of five dollars per point, which is five dollars per meter. Uh, last Friday, it was a meeting with Ferguson, and that's demolished to three dollars.
And we need approximately twenty-five hundred of them. So seven thousand five hundred.
What does this do? Does this set up a second one?
Right, what it does is when they. Right, what it does is when they put the new meter in, they'll be able to scan and read the serial number. They'll, they'll put in the old meter reading, because it's, every meter in town is gonna start off with a zero reading. And by doing it with the handheld, we will not be keying all of that information in. We just download it into a program, submit it to ACS, which is our software company. And we all set to go, go running the bills.
So the billing will come from somewhere, so?
No, we'll still be doing the billing, but rather than key, when this is all done, instead of keying in each reading, it'll all be done electronically, uh, which should give us the ability of even getting our bills out to the customers earlier, giving them more time and budget.
Good, now, so it's two dollars a unit?
Three dollars. We're saving on two dollars a unit.
Yeah, okay, so we get these new units put in, and we take a monthly reading. Are we, are, are we gonna have to have twenty-two hundred and fifty?
No, no, this is a one, one try.
This is the setup.
This is the setup, and we'll...
Our own units.
Right, got it.
They're just picking up, they're picking up all the information that's loaded in, they're updating what's already been loaded into the system now.
Correct.
Okay.
It should've been initially, originally, the other bid, though it wasn't, and then I negotiated a rate from five bucks to three.
We need twenty-five.
Diplomatic, but from twenty-five hundred of them, approximately. Is that motion?
It is.
Second, by Mike, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Close. Expansion unanimous. They saw a request to hire NPL Farming Truck.
In order to, uh, get rid of our liquid sludge that we have cost-effectively, um, we've decided that hauling out in a liquid form is gonna be more beneficial to us in numerous ways. Um, as you know, we've had problems with our metal and our sludge before. In order to, we met our limits finally, we're really, really close on it, and we need to get it out of our system. And the best way to do that for us to completely empty out it cost-effectively would be to liquid haul it. And I've got a request for, uh, for a bid of seventy-two hundred dollars to haul, um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of our liquid sludge, which is an estimate of what we have. And I guess we're looking to proceed to go with that.
Okay, any questions, Jesse? Ten million, that's supposed to be pressing the stuff out, we don't need this, all we've got rid of all that liquid equipment, we get it out there, right?
Yes.
Why are we doing this?
I don't know.
And aren't we taking in liquid stuff from other communities to press?
No, I don't think so. We, we did have, we have. We did, uh, Sherburne?
Yes, we've done Sherburne.
With it?
We did, uh, some for Fairmont also.
What? What, is it because of this metal thing or something? I mean, I don't understand why we have to do this, but we got rid of all that equipment.
Well, actually, actually, what we're finding is, is that it's going to be less expensive for us to haul this out at two cents a gallon than it is for us to press it. So there are times...
Hmm? What do we have to press for then?
There are times of the year when it's better to have a press, and there's times of the year when it's better to, to go with liquid form.
We didn't go there, but we built this back.
Absolutely, I, I agree with you. Yep. But what we've got right now is we've got a consultant that's working with us to make sure that we're running an efficient operation at less cost than what we've done in the past. And that's gonna be a balance of two different methods.
Because of the nickel, is it?
Because of the nickel, primarily, at this point in time.
But where, where's the nickel come from?
Uh, we've had platers in this community.
We don't have plating anymore, it's still there.
There's, there's residual that may be there for years.
So then we aren't pressing it for that reason?
We have pressed it in the past, we have not met the nickel limits, so we've had to end up taking it to landfill, which is costing us more money than what we're able to do now by land...
So doing the liquid process will remove the nickel faster?
What it's gonna do is it's gonna take the nickel completely out of the system, because what happens now is, as we press, there's part of that liquid goes back into our system.
And then the nickel is the liquid.
Yeah, it's, it's coming back in, so it's actually settling and staying in with building more nickel in the sludge than in staying in...
Keep removing the same, the same nickel.
Or, right, we're just recycling it right back.
Yep.
Okay, so when the nickel...
See, this is an opportunity to eliminate it.
Correct.
Then we will be able to go back and press?
Maybe eventually.
Yeah, we, we don't have storage on site for our pressed sludge, so we can only press out a tank or a load at a time, so...
Or is it going to get it as, as we had enough built up for them in the past?
Right, but it's not very efficient, you know, definitely. There's a lot of starting and stopping.
So when we press this stuff, was it good, what do you do?
It's going, it's land applied to, um, to a farmer, to a farmer.
Unless we're hiding nickel.
Yep.
And we shouldn't be hiding nickel after we get rid of...
Correct.
Maybe what we've got.
Right now, we're not meeting our limits, and I got, like, provided...
We, we are, we are just meeting our limits.
We weren't, I got three letters yesterday, we weren't for the PCA.
So by the farmer applying this to the field, obviously, he knows what he's doing, and, uh, and that's okay, to have this amount of nickel applied into this field?
Correct, we're, we're under the threshold right now, so it's a good opportunity for us to get liquid haul back.
Plus, the other advantage to the farmer is, is that when we press, we're removing ammonia. Him getting the liquid, he's also getting the ammonia, which is another product that he needs to end up with a better crop.
Well, if the farmer really likes the ammonia that we have in liquid form, and it's really good for his fields, are we always gonna have to pay this, or will he eventually just take it because it's liquid gold?
That's something we can sit down and negotiate with him. Unfortunately, right now, there's only one place, one community in the state of Minnesota that's actually getting money for its sludge, and that's St. Father. Everybody else is begging farmers to take it because of the rules and regulations that have been established by MPC and EPA as to where it can even be land applied.
So, so are we gonna, we're not gonna press anymore, so will this material gonna stay there? Get to the point we're at right now, we're, we're gonna pay seventy-two hundred dollars for that, have this all, then we're gonna do, just gonna build up, then pay to have it removed again, or?
Right, what you're saying is, are we gonna store it in liquid form for six to nine months until we can haul it out, is that what you're asking?
Are we ever gonna press again?
Yes.
Yeah.
We just need to get everything cleaned out right now.
It's just, it's, or it should be a one-time deal?
We're confident.
Because the nickel, when they press...
If, if we can get rid of everything that we've got now, all the liquid and the, the sludge that's in the bottom of our retention ponds, then we're still gonna have so much...
Not gonna be nickel at that?
The majority of it's gonna be gone.
Yeah, we should, hopefully, should be able to be under our limits.
It's concentrated in the sludge, now we're gonna get rid of the sludge.
Yes.
So there won't be any of it.
Right.
Yep. To an, to answer your question, it's probably not one time, but it should be minimum, can't shoot pressure. One time for now, but it's probably not gonna be all...
It ain't all of this nickel, it's in our system and the...
Right. You said seventy-five hundred, seventy-two hundred?
Seventy-two, it's... The pricing. It's, you know, twenty-five thousand.
On two cents a gallon.
It's not a reasonable price, I think, it's just, you know, it's seven million dollar plant, now it's not using it, like, it should be nine million, whatever.
And I, we share your frustration.
Motion approved.
Thanks, buddy. Your second?
Yeah.
Well, it's a one-time thing.
It's not a one-time, it's not a one-time thing.
We're making go to that.
It's not a one-time thing.
Hope.
Well, we're, we're confident. Three and a half?
Nope.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Expansion unanimous, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Harvey.
Thirteen L, Street Department Boy. We have completed the initial interviews, we are recommending to Personnel Committee two individuals for a final interview. Rather than waiting until the next city council meeting to hire that individual, we'd like to give consideration to giving the Personnel Committee the authority to opt for the job for one of the two individuals that will be interviewed.
That's what we do, we don't wanna wait.
That's correct.
Full move.
Mike, your second?
Aye.
Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Expansion carries unanimous. Done. Paul, Steve, Joe. Next one? Just, it's sufficient to say that.
Personnel Committee asks staff members, please.
That'll be short.
Done. Great.
We, uh, removed four more poles from the end of the pier. Uh, last week, we pulled the two bad sections, or the worst two sections of the pier off, and we still had piling sticking out of the water, and we got those removed today, so that, uh, we'll be working on the pier that's there, and it's gonna be a temporary fix. We're going to have to look down the road to replace and replace it.
Okay, how many feet did you take off?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four feet is taken off.
How, how far down into the bottom?
Six feet.
How far?
They were driven at least six feet through the, into the mud, and through the base. So every one of them snapped off below the lake bottoms. Wally stepped in a couple of them, so...
We're looking for this year to replace it or next year, Ray?
Hopefully next year, unless we can get a mini out there to start looking for something, but we're looking at next year.
And also lower, as we talked about that last meeting?
Well, we're leaning towards a ro, an actual roll-in and roll-out dock. Something that we can leave down at the water's at level and crank up and down.
Very good, okay.
And we'll take it in and fall and put it back in this period.
Okay, Ramo, the next question? Seal code in.
Yes.
So a lower for that, but which part of town gets it this year?
Southeast.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's going to be, we're still planning on doing it, we've got all the bids out, the bids have been awarded, the rock is ordered. Uh, I hope we get enough work done over there to do it all. We may have to shorten it, you know, might not get it all seal-coated this fall, we might have to go next, next summer sometime.
Because of...
Of, uh, how much patching there is to do and, uh, how the labor situation is.
And when we have budgeted for blacktop?
We have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the blacktop, a hundred and fifty thousand for seal coat.
One six zero.
Yep. And that is not what the water department's gonna pay towards it. Because we, the State Department for Regular Repairs needs every time it's got.
How many, okay, anything else, Ray?
Nope.
Mark?
Nope.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four and a half.
Twenty and a half.
Waiting for the next one.
Okay, fair enough, water breaks for two thousand fourteen, great.
Uh, I do have one thing, uh, the, uh, epoxy coating guys called me today, and, uh, he's gonna let me know which two days, but we will be closing the campground shelter, or campground bathrooms for two days to epoxy coat the floors and the walls, so...
And you get, and you get new stuff inside too as well?
As much new as we need, yes. Yeah, we'll, all the campers will be informed as soon as I give a definite date.
Very good, thanks, Ray. Mark? Linda?
The movie this week is held over as Amazing Spider-Man two.
Okay. Molly, and one thing, back, uh, the waterfall report. We're gonna put it in Shoppers Guide, you're gonna put it on the website too, that as well, in addition to the other thing. Okay, thanks, Molly. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll move on.
Mike and Linda, thank you for attending, have a good night.